We call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. It's Monday, August 8th, 2011. Dr. Richardson, have your agenda changes?
Yes, if you look in your table file, basically, you're going to see there, first of all, just the announcement of a closed negotiation strategy session that will immediately follow tonight's board meeting, and that will be down in the district office conference room. We also have, in terms of the consent grouping, we have a number of additional personnel items, including appointments, increases, decreases, and changes in assignment, as well as two retirements and resignations. So, just some additional pieces there, and that will continue to be busy right on through the next month or so, as we get everybody hired and moved around and so on.
It's that time of year.
Yes.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll add those items to the agenda as we move forward. And we have opportunity now for public comment, and this is a chance for members of the school district to address the board. We ask that you speak from the podium, that you state your name, the group you represent, if you are here speaking on behalf of a group. And we also ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. I'd also like to remind the public that this is not an opportunity to engage in debate or dialogue with the board, but really a listening opportunity for the board, which we very much appreciate. So, is there anybody here who wishes to address the board? Nobody hiding behind the podium? Okay. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 11th, 2011. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Move.
Moved by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 11th, 2011, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. On to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, I have a couple of announcements. First one is a fairly lengthy one upon Greenville Park, but also Northfield Middle School. There is a group that is working with a program called Fuel Up to Place 60, which is working on supporting healthy achievement and really working on student wellness. And both Greenville Park Elementary and Northfield Middle School have been awarded a Certificate of Healthy Achievement for the 2010-11 school year. Mary Wojcik is the program advisor at Greenville Park, and a combination of Greg Jevano, Jackie Magnusson, Michelle Steele, Sarah Mickelson, and Sheri Marika are all involved in terms of supporting the program at Northfield Middle School. Also, as part of that process, that allowed the schools that received this certificate then to turn around and apply for a grant, and Greenville Park has been awarded a $3,000 grant from Midwest American Dairy Farmers in the June round of funds for Fuel Up to Place 60. And so, as a recipient of those funds, Greenville Park will be expected to implement health eating and physical activity strategies outlined in their funding application. Some of those includes students will be encouraged to eat breakfast, lunch, and healthy snack daily. There will be breakfast participant names will be in place for a weekly drawing. A fun family fitness nutrition night will take place in September for students, families, and staff. There will be before-school activities two times a week for all students, including a walk-jog course that will be established outside to encourage recess and before and after-school use. And students will also be able to record their progress on a map, and a hundred-mile club will be formed for students able to log in miles, and t-shirts will be given to those students that reach the hundred-mile amount. Greenville Park will also have a traveling healthy snack cart, offering nutritious foods, and there will be also a composting station, obviously not in the same location, for students to use when finishing their meals. Funding will be used to provide a new cooler for the cafeteria, which will be used by everyone through the day, making access to milk safe and easy. And finally, funding will be used to purchase each classroom. Cups to use in the cup stacking. And I don't know if any of you have seen Greenville Park's cup stacking activities for rainy day activities, along with timing mats. They have developed a fairly sophisticated group of cup stackers who can stack cups far faster than I can. And I think I've learned how to not do that. I think after forty-seven years of marriage, I've learned not how to stack cups, but that's in history. Anyway, I also would like to congratulate Matt Hillman and staff in the district who were involved with the tech boot camp. Matt, this is the second annual tech boot camp. It was held last week. There were thirty different learning sessions over a five-day period. There were seventy-four different teachers who attended at least one session, for a total attendance of one hundred and sixty-six individual session participants. And again, the teachers were all volunteers, all came on their own, again, wanting to build their skills in technology. Also, we had a number of district staff who, again, on a volunteer basis, taught sessions, including Julie Warner, Cindy Samuelson, Duane Johnson, Matt Nahava, Daryl Sawyer, Heather Kruhinka, Missy Spitzak, Danielle Ammonson, Leah San, Greg Sumner, Brian Stevens, and Matt Hillman. In addition, we're very thankful to representatives from Speech Gear, which, again, is a local company here in town, who we've worked with in terms of translation software. Also, our own Southeast Service co-op for their work with Brain Honey, and Synergy and Leadership Exchange for also leading sessions. Also, a special thanks to our district's technology staff, who made sure all the equipment continued to hum throughout the entire week-long event. So, again, I think a very positive piece for us in terms of giving opportunities for our staff to gain skills in technology over the summer. So, that's our announcements for this evening, and I know, Ann, you have another announcement, don't you?
I do. This past week was the All-State Music Camp Week, and there were, I think there were ten students from Northfield High School who participated in men's choir, mixed choir, orchestra band, the different kinds of bands, and jazz band. And they all culminated with concerts at St. Ben's College, Concordia College, and St. Olaf. They all started at the same time, so we had music all over the state on Saturday.
Excellent. Anybody else? Julie?
I just wanted to thank Hannah Pushko and Pat Harland for the wonderful tour they gave the community of the Summer Plus program, and it was really fun to see. It's three hundred kids. Not only are they engaged academically, but socially, and I've had the occasion of being at the middle school and seeing the kids come off the bus, and they literally run off the bus. They're so excited to be there, and the energy in that building, and the programs that you're doing, it's phenomenal. And there's three hundred children. And I was given a delightful tour by a Northfield sophomore, high school sophomore, who did a wonderful job and was really excited, and even talked about his time years ago when he was in the program. So, it was really, really well done. So, thank you.
Very, very nice event. Anybody else? Anything? A quiet time around the district? Okay. We have no items for discussion, but we do have two very important items for individual action. And they relate to the renewal of our operating levy and our capital projects levy, and I want to first thank the board for the very thorough discussion that we had at our last meeting about the renewal of those levies and the way in which we might move forward with that. As you all know, we did reach consensus on seeking voter approval to revoke and renew our existing operating levy and renew it at the statutory cap for ten years, and also reached consensus to extend our capital projects levy by another ten years when the current levy expires. We also considered and agreed on the merits of the plan put forth by administration to combine polling places into five combined precincts. And I think it's a good plan that enables the district to run the election fairly and efficiently. So, as a result of that discussion at our last meeting, then administration went forth, worked with the attorneys to get the formal documents and resolutions. We need to formally move forward with those discussions. And those are the items that we have to take individual action on here tonight. So, Dr. Richardson, would you like to read me that for us?
Sure. And again, what I'd like to reflect tonight for the board is just, in brief summary, a little bit of the sense of these two questions, and a little bit of the brief history that's brought us to this point. So, when we take a look at question number one, that question basically asks the community to approve an operating levy of $1,604 per pupil for ten years, beginning in the 2012-13 school year. That levy would replace the current operating levy of $1,270 per pupil, two years before it's set to expire. An operating levy remembers a funding option provided by the state to allow school districts to request authority from the community to locally provide the necessary revenue to operate their schools. And again, as we've talked about before, a school district is never in a place where we can function on operating levy alone. There still is basically sixty to seventy percent of our school budget comes from state aid, but the operating levy can really make a difference in terms of being able to provide for greater flexibility and greater sustainability over the long haul. If we go back in this district and think about what's happened over the last six or seven years, remember that we spent very conservatively since we made the last major cut, which was a fourteen percent cut from the district's budget in 2004, '05, and '05, '06. And we basically, at that time, received community approval for the current operating levy referendum to begin being funded in 2006, '07. Since then, the district has avoided making any additional cuts through the 2010-11 year, despite the failure of the state to really add additional funding. Outside contracts for goods and services, as you remember, were also renegotiated, and we shared information with the board about the fact that we, by doing that, had reduced our costs by over $400,000 per year in terms of those goods and services like copiers, garbage pickup, et cetera. And then also remember that during the two-year employee salary settlements that are the most current in place right now, every one of the sixteen groups that is involved in salary negotiations ended up including no cost of living increases for any of over five hundred staff members. So, everybody, I think, did their share in their part to try to, again, try to operate as conservatively as we could during this time. You also know that last year, in 2011-12, the district did decide that we needed to move forward with making additional cuts, again, in preparation for the possibilities of the funding levels that we were going to see for this biennium. We made cuts of $700,000. Those will have impact on class size and educational programs and services for children in the community, but that has really been modified and balanced by a reduction of $1.4 million in the fund balance to offset, basically, any additional cuts that we might have. So, again, it definitely shows the advantage of having that fund balance in place as a way of stabilizing our programming. Right now, what we know, now that the budget has formally been approved by the state, that the state, basically, to balance their budget, is not providing additional, didn't provide additional funding for the last three years, and withheld or shifted about thirty percent of the district's state aid until the next school year. For this new biennium, '11 through '13, the state's increased that shift from thirty percent to forty percent to balance the state's budget, and that was one of the major ways that the budget was balanced for this next biennium. This further compromises the district's ability to support students by voting to hold back an additional $2.4 million in state aid in Northfield. And that money will not come back to us until the shift begins to be repaid. So, while we may be in a good place in terms of the fund balance, in terms of cash in the bank, we're cash poor. As a result of that, the state did provide a small state aid increase, and it will likely be used to offset borrowing costs incurred due to that forty percent shift in state aid. And again, because we're in good financial position right now, we'll probably be able to hold out longer before we have to go to either a line of credit or borrowing, but almost every district in the state, I think, will be in the position that sometime before the end of this year, they will need to borrow money. The new proposed operating levy identified under question one would give us levy authority that would increase each year at the rate of inflation. That levy would allow the school district to have the greatest possible financial stability and flexibility, and would help us, I think, to avoid additional staff and educational program cuts, at least for the next several years, and would reduce future cuts in student programs and services during the entire life of the operating levy over the next ten years. So, that's really question one. Question two basically asks our community to renew the current capital projects levy of $750,000 for an additional ten years when it expires in 2013, '14. The change that's occurred from previous capital project levy options is that the state gave us the opportunity, in the language of this particular levy, to basically have it simply tack on at the end of the current levy time period. So, passage of that levy question would mean that when the current $750,000 per year capital projects levy expires in 2013, '14, a new capital project levy of $750,000 would continue on, beginning in 2014, '15, and would go out again for a ten-year period. It's going to be important, I think, for people to remember that the passage of this ballot question for the capital projects levy is contingent on the successful passage of ballot question number one for the operating levy. So, if the operating levy question does not pass, the capital projects levy will not pass, even if there are not votes to do so. And again, I think it's very important that we focus with the community that the most important passage is the operating levy. We obviously would like to see both of them pass, because the capital projects levy has had a significant positive impact on our district facilities, but we would not want to see that levy pass at the expense of having the operating levy pass. The capital projects levy, again, is a funding option provided by the state to allow school districts to maintain and upgrade their facilities, to replace instructional technology in textbooks. And again, funds raised in the capital projects levy can only be used for those purposes. So, they're only used to address our fiscal and our capital needs in the district. They cannot be used for operating costs. If we think about our significant needs, in order to maintain, I think, the high standard that we have tried to have for our buildings, it's important, I think, for our community to remember that we have over 760,000 square feet of buildings in this district. We have over 153 acres of land. And so, when we're addressing the needs of those buildings, roofs, floors, walls, windows, all other kinds of pieces that are there, as we're addressing the updating and maintenance of HVAC systems, as we're addressing the needs to replace carpeting and replace tile and so on, just like in your home, the best thing that you can do as a good steward of the community's funding is to make sure that you're continually maintaining your building and continually making sure that it's in the best possible shape that it can be, because we want them to be able to last as long as they possibly can. Also, the levy is in place to provide opportunities to upgrade instructional technology and textbooks. And again, what we know is the cost of textbooks can be more than $300,000 a year at times. We hope at some time in the near future, that if Matt and I and our technology dreaming comes to fruition, we will actually see all textbooks move to electronic versions. However, when we get to that point, then we're going to have to be able to provide the technology for those textbooks to be looked at, and that probably will be, again, either some type of laptop, or iPad, or some other type of technology. So, even if the textbook costs go down because we go to electronic textbooks, that will be the offsetting cost, will be additional technology to make that there. Again, the proposed capital projects levy will provide $750,000 each year for the next ten years after the current capital projects levy expires, and again, can only be used to maintain buildings and grounds and replace instructional technology in textbooks. If the board makes the decision to move forward with these two questions at this time, we are also preparing to provide comprehensive information to all of our residents about the impact of both of these levy requests, and that will be done over the next several weeks, in terms of getting materials ready to share, both electronically and also in printed form, in materials that will be sent out to the community. So, there will be lots of opportunities for the community to learn more about it, as well as opportunities for them to hear about it and ask questions as we move forward. So, that's basically the two questions that we're looking at, and again, I think the board did a very good job of taking time last time to really chew on this, really think about the impact that we would have, and the importance of looking at these two levies at this time. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but I think otherwise, I think we're ready to take a look at these two questions.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Richardson. You have in your packet, board members, the resolution relating to revoking the existing referendum revenue authorization of the school district and approving a new authorization, approving a capital project levy authorization to replace an expiring authorization, and calling an election thereon. And I'm not going to read that whole resolution, but just the title is a mouthful. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
I move it.
Moved by Noel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Dr. Richardson, there is this change in circumstance, I think, since we were here, is that the legislature did finally settle on a budget. You said that they're going to borrow an extra $2.4 million from our budget, and how much are we looking at in actual revenue increase if this levy were to pass?
Basically, again, would take us from the $1,270 per pupil amount to $1,604 per pupil. And I'm going to see if I've got something that'll give us a number there. I believe that it would take us from approximately $5,500,000 per year to about $7,710,000 per year. So, basically, it would increase by about $1.5 million per year in terms of available funding.
Which we then get the opportunity to lend to the state industry.
Very likely. Now, there is one good thing, John, and for all the kind of manipulation and having an hour at the end to kind of actually read the law before it was passed, one of the pieces that I think the legislature heard very clearly from superintendents was a real concern about the short-term borrowing strategy that they'd used in the past, because we actually have been hit twice. We've been hit by the shift, which is a long-term borrowing strategy, where they're basically saying, for this next year, we're going from getting seventy percent of our money in the year it's owed, and thirty percent the next year, to sixty percent in the year it's owed, and forty percent the following year, so that that gap of ten percent really never comes back to us until the levy starts to be repaid. But the other thing that they've been doing to us over the last couple of years is they've also been doing a short-term borrowing strategy, where they were avoiding having to go out and borrow money themselves as a state by using a piece of the statute that had never been used before until the last two years. And in that piece of statute, it allowed them to basically borrow on a short-term basis if they paid us back before the end of the school year. And for us, in the first year they did that, we loaned the state, short-term, about, what was it, about $4.5 million, and then this last year, about a million dollars. They have now put language into the new omnibus education law that does not allow the state to go to school districts first to borrow that money. So, that part is going to be helpful. But, again, I think that the discussion that we had last time, if you remember, it is about the issue of you really have two balances. You have a fund balance, which is what you are authorized to spend if you had it, and then you have a cash balances, which is really what you can spend, because you actually have dollars to back it up. And the problem has been, as we've looked at the impact of the shifts, is that as a district, and I think our auditors will probably say that again to us this fall when they come in, we're a district that is, fund balance is pretty healthy, but our cash balance is dwindling rapidly. And the problem is, when your cash balance dwindles, then you're in a position where you have to start borrowing money to basically pay your bills. And every dollar we borrow, and every dollar we pay interest on, that's a dollar that the taxpayer doesn't get anything out of. Because if I spend that money on paying interest on a loan from the bank, or the loan from a financial institution, those dollars simply go to pay interest. They don't have any positive impact on kids. And so, we want to try to avoid as much as possible borrowing dollars in that format, because many of the districts right now around us, Lakeville, Burnsville, a number of districts in the metro, are borrowing eighteen and twenty million dollars at a clip and paying four to $500,000 a year in operating levy. And you do the math, that's basically eight to ten teachers that disappear from their districts, because instead of being able to spend that money to keep those teachers in place, they're spending the money to pay the interest on the loans. So, we want to try to stay away from that as much as we possibly can. Does that answer your question, John? Thank you.
Anybody else? And Julie?
I'm assuming that in the language for the capital projects levy, that we can't legally include the language that says it's contingent upon the passage of the first levy?
Yes.
Otherwise, we obviously wouldn't do that.
Yeah, and that is a mirror of the language we used in 2006, which basically said, the second can't be passed unless the first one is passed.
So, that's just up to us to communicate and offer information.
Yes.
Then, my second question is, we had, and I know it's all being worked out and would be communicated, obviously, very well to, you know, anyone living in the district, but we had estimated something around $73,000 per year on a $100,000 home, in terms of the property tax impact. Did that include both levies, or is that just operating?
If you take a look at your materials, I think, they give you a chart, I think, of each one, I believe. Let me double-check.
You might have had them in the materials from last year.
Yeah, it may not be in the set of materials. It's, on a $100,000 house, you're right, Julie, would be, I believe, about $73 per year.
I just couldn't recall if that was both operating or just operating.
No, that would be just the operating.
Okay.
Because there's no change in the other levy.
Because the other levy, remember, there's no change. So, when you look at the chart for the capital projects levy, what it shows is revoke and renew, and the change is zero, 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 all the way down, every category.
Yep, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, no, not a problem. But it's, and again, that's really important, I think, for people to know, is that when we look at the renewal of the capital projects levy, there is no additional tax impact on people for maintaining the capital projects levy going forward, because we're not adding anything to that levy, we're keeping it exactly the same amount.
All right, thank you.
Your man.
Anyone else? Any comments? I think the important thing for the community to understand is that really what we're trying to do here, you know, we don't take this decision lightly. We're very cognizant of the fact that this community has done a tremendous job of supporting the schools, and it has made an incredible difference for the students in this district. But what we're trying to do with this is to provide as much certainty and stability But what we're trying to do with this is to provide as much certainty and stability as we can for the students in this district, you know, really in the face of extraordinary uncertainty at both the state and the federal level. So we don't take this decision lightly, but it is an important, important piece in this board's, I think, responsible management of the school to try to, try to create as much stability as we can. And so if there are no further comments, then we need to take a roll call vote on this resolution. Danita?
Lawson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinnell?
Aye.
Strattborn?
Aye.
and Nelson.
Aye. Thank you. The second resolution that we need to take up connected to this is the resolution which establishes combined polling places for certain multiple precincts and designating hours during which each polling place will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. So, Dr. Richardson, do you want to review what we're doing here?
Yes. And again, what we're looking at is reducing the number of total precincts and polling places down to five. And they are listed on, beginning on the first page, in terms of the combined polling place, shows you the location of the combined polling place, and then specifically the territory in terms of townships and precincts that that particular combined polling place will serve. As we looked at, at these, we really tried to look at the concept of saying, how can we make sure that people have the most convenient polling place to their existing homes, but understanding that we don't want to look at trying to create every single polling place that's in place for a general election. And so what you'll see is, as you look at the combined polling places, for the polling place at Bethel Lutheran Church, you actually have all the townships that are currently in Dakota County, basically come to Bethel for their voting. And, and Bethel, again, also serves the part of Northfield that currently is in Dakota County. If we take a look at St. John's, what we're looking at is, is all of the portions of Rice County that are to the, it would be Webster County, Webster Township, and the area that would be directly west of Northfield, and basically drawing those folks in. So again, they come to the, to the closest polling place that they can possibly come to. Everybody on the south side, including everyone that is in Forest and Bridgewater and Aaron Township, and also Cannon City Township, as well as, again, the, the Northfield precincts all come to the NRC. And again, so we're drawing everybody up now from kind of the south end and southwest end of the district and bringing them up to the NRC. Again, the most, we believe, the most direct path and the quickest location for them. And then for the folks coming to, to UCC, the United Methodist Church, they would draw in everyone that is currently to the south and east of the town of Northfield. And so that would draw in the city of Denison, Warsaw Township, anybody that's coming from Goodhue County, again, and Northfield Township, as well as some precincts. And then finally...
That's at the Methodist Church, Denison.
That's at the, the United Methodist Church. And then at First United Church of Christ, those are, in fact, all city precincts. So of the five, basically, we have four of the five that draw in individuals from other parts of our school district that are outside of Northfield. And then First United Church of Christ has strictly precincts within the city. But again, if you remember, as we talked about mileage, we knew that individuals right now who live in the farthest southeast corner of the Webster Township already are going like six miles to get to their polling place in Webster. And really, we're only looking at about three more miles in terms of distance for them to come to St. John's. So I, our sense is that we have tried to, to balance convenience for people and an opportunity for people to access a polling place with the ability to reduce the number of precincts, which means we reduce the number of head judges, the number of judges that need to be there, which is a cost savings to the district, but also the reality is, in an off year, being able to make sure we can marshal all the judges we need, we think we have a much better chance of getting those judges if we have a reduced number that we have to get.
Okay. Once again, I'm not going to read the whole resolution to you, but we do have the resolution in our packet and ask for a motion to adopt that resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any further discussion? Ann?
I'd just like to thank, I think, Danita's behind a lot of this polling place thing.
Yes, she is.
And that, at our last meeting, it was really clear how much work there was to make a, a good plan for polling. So thank you, Danita, for how that worked. You did a great job.
We've, I've really spoken a lot with Deb Lill, the person who runs elections for the city of Northfield, as well as the election advisors from Dakota and Rice County. They've been really helpful and will be helpful as we execute this election.
Thank you.
Because this is a, is a very different situation in that while they will give us some support in terms of testing the machines and doing some of the other kinds of pieces, we basically are running, are totally running the election process. And that includes not only the day of the election, but all of the activities around absentee voting. So it's, it's a very different situation than we have in a normal election year where basically the city and county cover all of that, and we simply just insert name here, insert, insert, you know, resolution here and see what happens.
Yeah. A huge amount of extra work for Danita. Anyone have any other comments? I, I do think this is a very reasonable plan to, as you say, provide access for our voters, but also make it possible for us to very responsibly and efficiently run the election. And so with that, Danita, we have a motion in a second, right? Let's take the roll call.
Lawson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Quinnell?
Aye.
Strattborn?
Aye.
and Nelson.
Aye. Thank you. Onto the consent grouping, and I just remind board members there are a number of additions in the table file. Is there anything anybody wishes to pull from the consent grouping? Anybody ready to make a motion to approve the consent grouping?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no items for information in the packet. Future meetings, Monday, August 22nd, at 7 o'clock, regular meeting, and then Monday, September 12th, the regular meeting after the school year has begun. With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.